I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. And our first order of business is the budget allegiance. Charles, would you leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong. Matt, I'd just like to take a minute if we could this morning. Over silence for the officers in Bristol and their families.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Item two, public forum. Is there anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Not sure we have any members of the public there other than, there is a telephone number. Which is an eye test for me from here. Okay, well, hearing none. Let's move on to item three, and that's approved minutes of the October third, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments, questions, changes, additions, deletions? Tracy got it spot on once again. Thank you, Trace. All right, we have one item to add to the agenda, and as we received a, an application for a board and commission seat, and that would be a recommendation to appoint Gloria Nemtrich to the Guilford Housing Authority. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda as seven point six?
Yes, so moved.
And next second, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff. Yes, and those in the room.
Aye.
Thank you. Item four, Board of Director of Operations Cliff Gurnum, discuss and take possible action to award RFQ slash RFP number two dash twenty-one twenty-two on-call architects and engineering services. Good morning, Cliff.
Good morning. How are we doing?
Good. How about you?
I'm doing well. Thanks for having me.
Anytime.
So this should be relatively quick. We do this every about three years. We go out to bid for on-call services. So we did so again this year. We had a large number of applicants apply. The Standing Building Committee went through all those applications or submittals. They reviewed their experience, size of projects, types of projects, their fees, and based upon that information, they built the recommendation to have the following firms be on the on-call list for the upcoming year. So we have Michael Horton Associates, Antonazi Associates, Summerhill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, Silver Petricelli and Associates, Salamon and Associates, Hibbert and Rosa's Architects, and Capital Studio Architects. So some we have used before, and then we have a couple of new ones as well, so.
Great. Thank you, Cliff. Charles?
It seems to me that all, everyone is on there.
No, there was, I think we had, I don't remember the total number. Actually, I can check.
Okay, the bid list, oh, wait a minute.
We had over like fifteen applicants, I think it was.
Okay, so I, I'm seeing here. Okay, yeah, I didn't realize there were.
Eighteen applicants, I believe, we had.
Yep, and we took seven. And you're right, I do recognize several of those on there that we've used in the past, so. Great, all right. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Charles moves it.
Second?
Two seconds. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner? I mean, Ruoff, sorry.
Hi.
There you go.
Excuse me, Matt, AAA is gonna come in a few minutes, so when I have to leave, do you want me to completely sign off or just go outside?
Leave it open, then you can come back.
Okay, thanks. Aye for this.
Stay on Zoom.
Okay, those in the room.
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, item five, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malvies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm at the bar here at Water's Edge, so I don't have great lighting. But it's not open yet, so that's a bummer. And I'm still there. But my conference is going on in the next room, so I'm, I'm gonna sign off after I give my report.
Okay.
So I'd like to start with revenues. We are fifty-four percent collected as of a quarter through the year. Last year, we were at fifty-three point five. You know, last year, we were lagging a little in tax collection, but as you can see, we are not having that concern this year. Everything seems to be doing well or better than expected at this point, so I will take questions.
Yeah, any questions on revenues? Mary Jane, you're not gonna take credit for that wonderful finance line?
Well, you know, I, I did last month, so I thought I'd do it every other month or so.
Of course, it is a double-edged sword, right?
Yes, it is.
All right, any, no questions? Let's move on to expenses.
Okay, expenses are at thirty-one percent, just a little bit higher than we were last year at this point. All of the departments are trending exactly where I would expect them to be. Some of them that are over the twenty-five percent are due to timeliness of payments and encumbrances. As you can see, we have over a million dollars worth of encumbrances, but there, none of the departments have any problems at this point, so I will once again take questions.
Any specific questions on, on expenses? Mary Jane, is it too early to start focusing on the fire department budget again? Remember, we had that we had that significant issue with replacement salaries. It doesn't seem as bad at this point, is it?
No, at, at this point, it seems to be okay. And of course, we do have some reimbursements to offset that, that, you know, aren't in yet. So at the moment, they seem to be okay.
Okay.
But we, we will be watching that very closely this year.
Right, I think Mitch will confirm that we're still utilizing temporary hiries, some of them. We moved some of those to full-time to, to replace the vacancies. Mitch, we still, still moving down that path?
In fact, I was just at the fire department, eight o'clock this morning, doing orientation for two more part-time firefighters. So we've added two more. So we, we've now hired a total of six part-time firefighters, three of whom have been moved to full-time in the past month, and one more is going to be full-time in November, and then they just hired two more that just started as part-timers. We'll see how that works out.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything on expenses? Okay, all right, Mary Jane, medical?
Well, medical, as you can see, we've had another low month. I've been in contact with our consulting firm, and they are looking into it, although no, nothing seems to really strike us other than Anthem is reporting that there are staffing issues at many of the providers, so that the invoices aren't being processed as timely as they used to be. So people might be having procedures, but the bills aren't coming to Anthem and therefore not coming through to us. The only other thing he noted was that May and June seemed to be strikingly high. So it's possible that people, because of the age, how the HSA works, you know, scrambled at the end of the fiscal year to get whatever they needed done and haven't been getting it done right now. But we, we don't know, other than those reasons, why it might be so low for these first three months. Typically, September comes right back up, as you can see from last year, but that did not happen this year.
Okay. Well, a little bit early, but, you know, projecting at this point at eight hundred thousand dollar surplus, but we know that may disappear quickly with one. Too early.
Right.
One month to catch up.
One month could take us right out. Exactly right. But we are closely watching it and, you know, with our consultants, so.
And obviously, we're not, we have not hit any ISL.
We have, we have not. That still represents just one member over the seventy-five thousand.
That's good news for the health of our employees and their families, so. Although we suspect it won't stay that way, unfortunately. Okay.
Likely not.
Anything else? Anything else, Mary Jane?
All set.
All right. Item five dot two, consider and take possible action to transfer premium credits for the sale of bonds from unassigned fund balance to fund balance committed to future debt payments as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. MJ?
Uh-oh. She may have pulled the trigger too quick.
She may have pulled the trigger. Okay.
She was reaching for, she was reaching for the mouse.
Okay, well. Yeah, we can wait till the next meeting. So is there a motion to table?
I'll make that motion, Matt.
Mary Jane? You're muted.
I'm so sorry. I went to, I went to move over to board pack, and I hit the wrong button.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
All right, so we're talking about the premium credits.
Correct. So as we, as we do each year, we, or have, we have done recently in the past, we, we sell bonds, we do get a premium, and we do choose to use those premiums to offset the ups and downs in our debt for overtime. So I'm looking to have the balance transferred over to the fund balance committed for that specific purpose, so that, as Matt would say, my favorite chart continues to show a gradual drop instead of ups and downs as we make large payments for, for our debt.
Thank you, MJ. And this, this amount was contemplated when we set the budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Mary Jane? Is there a motion to make the transfer? In a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
A motion carries. Mary Jane, back to the bar, or I mean, back to your.
Thank you. See you tonight, Matt.
Okay, item six, Economic Development Report from Sherry Cody. Sherry, good morning.
Good morning. I'm just gonna share my screen.
Sherry, after the meeting, could you send us this report so that I have a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so I wanted to start with an, an overview of where we are today on our, our grant program, our property enhancement grant program. So as you know, we did launch this program in February. Due to the ARPA commitment, we were given twenty-five thousand dollars to issue up to one thousand dollar grants, so twenty-five grants of a thousand dollars each. And so today, we have been able to do that on a few, and I'll just review quickly. Raven Rose Boutique was our first applicant, and this is their before and after photo, because they had already purchased their sign, brand-new business at the time, and they spent thirteen hundred dollars, and they were reimbursed a thousand. Ashley's Ice Cream also replaced their sign, and you can see that they spent sixty-nine hundred dollars, and they were given a thousand. Same area of town, a one-fifteen state square LLC, spent a significant amount of money repairing their parking lot and ADA access, and also they were given a thousand dollars for that. Sachem Square, that's where the Ashley's store is, same thing, a thousand dollars to repair their parking lot and their ADA. Jay Gresham Design had applied on behalf of the Quonset Hut Shops. There's a few shops there, and they wanted to replace their sign, so they did that and were reimbursed. The First Congregational Church did some painting and, and upgrading of their sign, and they were only reimbursed the, the cost that they spent, which was just under eight hundred dollars. Evergreen Fine Crafts replaced their window boxes with benches. As you can see, they've decorated them for Halloween, and were reimbursed the total cost of that. So those that I just reviewed with you are projects that have actually received their reimbursement. Now I'll show you the few that we still have in the works. This project, repairing and painting the exterior trim of Vera Wolfe has been completed, but they have not submitted their paperwork yet. I am waiting for that so that they can get reimbursed. The East Creek Banquet Hall is, they are having some supply issues with their lighting, so their project is taking a little longer than they anticipated. So that's still in the works. Tracy Brent Collections, I believe she has replaced her signage, but has not submitted her paperwork yet. So same with the Brent and Fiori over on Broad Street, replacing their window trim and their door, door trim. Still waiting for their paperwork on that one. And then South Lane Bistro, it appears that they may have finished their project. I'm not a hundred percent sure, because right now it's enclosed with some, it looks like maybe, I'm not sure, temporary enclosure or not. I, I, I don't know. I have to check in with them to see if they're finished. And then our last approved grant application was the Christ Episcopal Church, and they will be doing some exterior painting. But I wanted to show you overall, you know, that all of the projects, their estimated or actual project costs totaling a hundred and four, almost a hundred and five thousand dollars, with a reimbursement amount so far of sixty-five hundred dollars. There are other applications out floating around, waiting to receive those, so that we can, you know, recommend or not to the EDC to approve those, and so we still have funding left. All in all, I believe it's eleven businesses that have applied, or twelve that have applied and have been committed to. So I'll stop there for a second and see if you have any questions for me on that.
I know, the only, only concern I have, and a concern might not be the right word, is we, we could have potentially have been a little more generous had we known that the demand was not going to be as excessive as we thought it might be. But at some point, we might want to revisit another round of these if, if it's appropriate, although I think you're, you're continuing to, to try to solicit applications, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And, and all of these applicants have been very happy and grateful for the, this grant opportunity. And, and, you know, yes, we could have offered maybe twenty-five hundred dollars or something like that, but at the time, we just weren't sure of what the demand would be. All right, so I'll move on. So a few business updates. I'm sure you all are aware that Prime on Whitfield has opened. They opened late last month, and they are offering dinner as well as lunch with, they say, a limited menu to start with, and then a full menu. So we'll, we'll be on the lookout to see when they open up their full, their full menu. A's Unique Boutique out on Boston Post Road West is in the process of closing their, their physical location. It will be going to online sales only. Caspio and Company Hair Studio, which was located over near Deeks Bagel, Citizens Bank, and Mojos, has moved to the other side of town, nine ninety, or sorry, twenty-four seventy Boston Post Road. They've also changed their name to Hair Off the Grid. A ribbon cutting that we have coming up, thanks to the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, Back to Balance Chiropractic and Family Wellness, that's located behind Planet Fitness, and they will be hosting a ribbon cutting in mid-November. Where the Purple Bear used to be, you'll, I'm sure you've seen Gentleman's Social. It's an outfitter and supply company. Looks like they will be opening this month. And then over by the CVS Plaza, or in the CVS Plaza, two new businesses locating there. Pokimoto Hawaiian, which is a franchise, of course. Interesting that that franchise started in New Haven originally, and then Moonshot's not, obviously, not a new business. Had, they have a food truck on the green. They are actually locate, opening a storefront location there where Guilford Coffee House used to be, and they have told me that they will not be having their truck on the green anymore once they move into that location. So a little update on our tourism website. We have a committee, as you know, in partnership with the Guilford Preservation Alliance. We have selected a vendor, Regan Digital is what they are called, and we've met with them a couple of times while they've done sort of a discovery phase to learn what we're looking for. At the moment, we are waiting for them to, to show us like a, a mock-up of a homepage. So our small committee has been meeting with them, and they've been doing a great job so far. It's really good partnership with the GPA. Everybody is very happy with this relationship, and we're looking forward to rolling out a new tourism website in early spring. Just a quick update on Guilford Green Merchants, their annual sidewalk sale that they host every August was great for them, from all the feedback that I have heard. They will be honoring veterans in November, and the way they do this is by decorating their storefronts in some fashion to honor veterans. Their new chairperson, Tracy Fair, is very energetic and excited about doing some kind of theme every month, and so for, for November, it will be honoring veterans. And then every year, they do host a girls' night out. This year, it will be on December eighth. Last year, they did it from, I think it was noon until, I don't know, eight, eight PM, seven PM, and it was so busy that the only feedback, negative feedback I heard was that the, the merchants were exhausted, because they had so many customers, which is an absolutely great thing, I think. You may be aware that I maintain close working relationships with the chambers in our region, and last week, of course, we had the pleasure of attending the Greater New Haven Chambers Annual Meeting and Award Ceremony, where they honored our very own Matt Hoy. And so some of the things that I heard them talk about when they announced Matt was his contributions to CCM, as you know, he sits on their board. Scrog, being their current chairperson, the, all the work that he's done on behalf of Tweed, of course, which is very important to our region, as well as the legislative support that he has offered to the city of New Haven. So we were fortunate to attend that and celebrate with Matt and his wife. Just a couple more things. I have been working on a business resource guide. It is still in draft form, but it should be finished hopefully soon. This guide will provide a list of valuable resources to businesses of, of all types. So it's actually broken up by sort of industry type, and it also provides, of course, town profile, contact information for who to contact at the town, and this is for, you know, businesses that are already here, and also businesses that would like to, to locate to Guilford. And then I think finally, another piece that's in the works is our, sort of our marketing collateral, full-color eleven-by-fourteen brochure that we can use as a marketing piece for bringing businesses to town. It can be used as a print piece or electronic, will be shared at a minimum at trade shows meant for business recruitment. And I think that's, oh, no, one more. Just developments, and, and there's nothing new here, but these are some of the things that are in the works right now. This week, P and Z, the Planning and Zoning Commission, will deliberate on the public hearings for three ninety-seven Church Street. So hopefully, we can move that project forward, and Strawberry Hill Preserve, although they've received an application, there's no further action that I am aware of on that application. So I'm gonna stop there, see if you have any questions.
Walmart?
Yep, so Walmarts, as you know, it's been published everywhere, that they were in negotiations, that the Shoreline Plaza folks were in negotiations with TJ Maxx and Home Goods. It appears that that has stopped. So we're waiting anxiously to hear any further information that we can share publicly, but right now it's, you know, there's a bit of an issue with that property, and that is that the box size is old-school. From what they're telling me, it's just a size that is not relevant today, and so the Home Depots, the Lowes are looking for bigger space. So without moving other businesses out of that plaza to expand that space, it's gonna be a little bit challenging to recruit a, another big box.
Got it. Any questions?
Anything going on with our neighbors Madison? Is any, anything changed there since your last report?
In terms of doing things jointly, nothing immediate on the horizon. Well, that's not true. There's one, there's one thing that is really just a concept in my mind, but I'd like to be able to get the towns together, along with Clinton, the chambers, and the EDC folks to talk about a tourism strategy, that, you know, there's nothing concrete. It's just an idea in my head at the moment. But I feel like the three of, the three of our towns, being smaller in size, have a lot of synergy when it comes to tourism, and, and we may be able to work together to do something a little bit regionally. That's all.
To that, to that point, a couple of years ago, Ryan Dukes was pretty aggressive in trying to put together something similar to the concept you just talked about, which wound up, I don't, I'm not sure we ever saw any output from that.
They, they, they had hired a consultant to do some sort of a report for them. That was obviously before I, I got here. And I think COVID might have had a, a hand in the, the lack of progress, but I also think that there might have been a lack of commitment from the five towns. It included Durham and North Branford, as well as Guilford, Branford, and Madison. Yeah, so if, from, from the feedback I've received, there's not a lot of excitement for continuing that sort of thing, and it was not really focused on tourism. It was on economic development. It was attracting, you know, maybe bigger businesses and development.
Thank you. To me, Charles?
There, there's so much construction going on on the west side of town. Are all of those projects on track, or are there any changes or additions or deletions going on there?
Um, I believe that they would, they're on track. I have not heard any deletions and additions. I know, you know, Dunkin' Donuts obviously is, is in construction, and I believe they've been met with some, some issues that they're working through, but that would be a question more appropriate, I think, for Jamie, who's a little bit more plugged into, to those kinds of things.
Wasn't there some retail plan for across from the, the Fresh Market?
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's actually a big development, including housing and retail, and they're still working through the, their plans. They have not applied for anything yet. Well, let me rephrase that. A long time ago, they applied, and now they're doing the, the road clearing in the back. But in terms of a site plan for the front, they are revising that. They have not come back with a, a new site plan for the front parcel.
Okay, so that sort of answers my question, but I guess my question grew out of the conundrum that we're having at Walmart. You know, that, I remember when that plaza was redone, it was specifically planned to keep it small. So, I mean, there was even a plan at one point to, you know, sidewalks and green areas and that type of thing. Is there retail harsh, part of of, of the new project, I guess you can't tell, because we don't have a site plan, but is that going to be small units also, or is there anything big there?
Well, so there was a site plan approved for that, I don't know when, years ago, and it did include two pads for retail. Drive, I believe. Yes, drive-through, I believe it was small drive-throughs. Is that correct, Matt?
You're exactly correct. There, there was plans for, I, I think it was rumored to have been Starbucks finally, up, up at that end with.
So any development plan there is not the big box stuff at this point?
No, it is not. It's not big box. And, and just as a recap, yes, the, for lack of a better term, almost strip-mining of the property in the back. And just as a recap, yes, the, for lack of a better term, almost strip mining of the property in the back, which had been contemplated when the original approval for the 105 age-restricted units was passed, what, 20 years ago, I think it was, Charlie? So I think once they complete their site development work in the back, you'll probably see some movement towards both the retail piece and the housing piece in the back. There are two other, there are at least three other projects. One is the Dunkin' Donuts project, just just west of the Bishop's on the left-hand side. Unfortunately, the developer, Frank DeAndrea, who serves on planning and zoning, ran into a bit of a snafu. Apparently, the Connecticut Water Company doesn't come all the way up that way. So there, he would need to have 1,000 feet of connection built to tie together their veins, if you will. So I've been working with Frank as well as Craig Patla.
Water, Bishop?
It comes up and down, and there's just that 1,000-foot section, which, which, I've been working with Craig Patla, who's the Vice President for Water Delivery Services. He's a great guy.
I can relate to it. My house is right in the middle of a 1,000-foot gap.
Yeah. So, so actually, there is, the capital plan, Connecticut Water Company's capital plan, includes fixing that piece because of just, you know, the way they want to be able to redirect water.
I'm just surprised at that building across the street.
I don't know. So anyway, I've been working with Craig, and I've introduced Craig to Frank, and there's a possibility of potentially advancing their capital plan to meet Frank's emerging need, because that's, it's a pretty expensive piece to have done, so. So that development is progressing. And then there are, in addition to the one across from the rock pile, there are two other projects for housing on the west side. One of them was the 48 unit that was listed here, and then there's a second one that's about a dozen units that they are working with, the developers working with Town Hall South. And I'm pretty sure they're coming to P&amp;Z relatively soon, if not already.
When you're doing the exploration of the water main thing, I'm sure you've already considered it, but, you know, even doing something like what we did at Moberg, where we funded and then people deal with it over a period of time, I think. I know it's different in the commercial area, but my understanding is $1,000 a foot. So if it's 1,000 feet, it's not, you know, overwhelming, things considered. The problem is there isn't that much developable property there.
Exactly, to recover those cars. So, yes, Dunkin' Donuts is gonna use a lot of water, but are they gonna use that much water? And the number, Charlie, you're closer to it, but the number that Frank was throwing around was closer to 300,000 for whatever needed to be done.
And probably there because of the blast, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of blasting to have to go in there.
Which may be, well, be the reason it was not connected in the first place, anyway. So those are also taking the two other projects on the west end. And I think the Muse, if I'm not mistaken, Sherry, is now a rental property. The rental properties, they were originally listed for sale for, at 750 in that market. Apparently, there was not a responsive appetite for that. Now they're gonna be rentals. Is that the case?
I believe so on the Muse, and that's also true for the condos, the high-end condos behind Gatehouse West. Vikanatra's condos are now going to be rentals as well.
Okay.
Condos, yeah.
Yeah, the Muse, the one on the right, which was the old Sachem House.
Those are individual residences.
What's that?
Those are gonna be, those are gonna be rentals now?
Yeah, the ones on the right-hand sides are going out, yeah. What was that restaurant that was in it?
Guilford.
Guilford Top.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's rentals. I mean, they look like a bar. The Gatehouse ones, those are individual, high-end houses back there.
They were. Now, there, yeah, there is, there's an emerging rental demand. A lot of it around the Rothberg Industries, so some of the folks that they're bringing in, not necessarily looking for housing, permanent housing, but, you know, temporary rental-type housing. So there's an increasing demand. In fact, I'm seeing, I have the luxury of going by that area. I see more and more folks coming from the train station. So I think some of the younger ones may be living in New Haven and training, doing the reverse commute out to work for any of the Rothberg.
So was predicted. I mean, the train station, it's why, part of the reason it was redone, because of that.
Reverse commute, yeah. All right, Sherry, thank you very much. A lot of good things going on.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, item seven, appointments and resignations. 7.1, act on a resignation received from Kelly Thompson from the Housing Authority. Is there a motion with appreciation and regret? And a second? Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. 7.2, act on a resignation received from Gloria Gimme from the Human Rights Commission. Is there a motion? And a second?
Second.
With appreciation and regret. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Act on a recommendation to appoint John Hartford to the Safe Streets Task Force. Is there a motion?
So.
And a second? Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. 7.4, act on the reappointment of Mark Larkins to the Public Works Commission for a term to expire on May 31st, 2024. Is there a motion?
So.
Second. Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
And those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. 7.5, act on a recommendation to appoint Jake Usserson to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September 30th, 2023. Is there a motion?
So.
Is a second?
Second.
All right, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. 7.6, act on a recommendation to appoint Gloria Nubrick to the Guilford Housing Authority Commission. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, let me try your minds. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries. Eight, request for use of town property. Eight dot one, act on a request from the Guilford Garden Club to place a sign on the green advertising its annual Christmas boutique on December 2nd, 2022. Is there a motion? A move, a second?
Second.
And let me try your minds. All in, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Nine, committee reports.
Sorry, excuse me. Tomorrow night, there was an open forum program at the library at 6:30 to just remind and give people in town an opportunity to ask questions about the various affordable housing projects that are planned or in some form of progress in the town, with both public and private developers. So, so it's 6:30. It will be in hybrid fashion, so people can come in person or Zoom from home.
If you have to pre-register, is that true?
I think so. If anyone listening to this is having problems with that, I would suggest just calling the library and asking to speak to someone in the reference department, 453-8282, and they will assist you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anything under correspondence? Old business? New business? Public forum, anyone wishing to address this public forum? Hearing none. Is there a motion to go into executive session for two possible topics? One is potential property purchase, and the second is consider take possible action to reopen a collective bargaining agreement. Is there a motion to go into? A second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, we're gonna invite Gary and Kevin McGee is here. Mitch, you're welcome to stay for both of them.
I'll come down.
And Pete, you're welcome to stay if you've nothing better to do.
All right, thanks. I'll probably take a pass on this one. Thank you, though.
All right, is there a motion come out of executive session?
So.
A second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. During the executive session, there are no motions made, no actions taken, but based on conversation, is there a motion to authorize the Land Acquisition Committee Commission to hire an appraisal company for a target property that they are evaluating?
So.
Second.
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Nothing else to accomplish? Motion to adjourn?
So.
And a second? Let me try your minds. Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you all. Sandy, did you rescue your keys?
Well, you won't believe this. They came, they opened the car, and the keys are not in there.